Okay, folks, the appointed hour having arrived and a quorum being present, I'll now call the special town meeting to order. Ask the town clerk to read the warrant in return.
Warrant for the special town meeting Saturday, June 20th, 2020 at 10:30 a.m. Griffith Field at Aparoniquet Regional High School, 100 Holland Road, Lakeville, Mass. To either of the constables of the town of Free Town, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Free Town, who are qualified to vote in town affairs, to meet at Griffith Field at Aparoniquet Regional High School, 100 Holland Road, Lakeville, Mass. on Saturday, the 20th day of June 2020 at 10:30 a.m., then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: the Asona Post Office, the East Free Town Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store in Asona, the Free Town Town Hall, the Free Town Communications Center, and the Free Town Fire District Station #3. Hereof fail not and make return of the original warrant with your doings thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Free Town, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the town of Free Town, this second day of June, anno domini 2020, signed by the Board of Selectmen. To the town clerk, town of Free Town, Mass., June 4th, 2020, I have this day posted attested copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein, signed by the Constable, Carlton E. Abbott, Jr.
So for the special town meeting, if we need to do a hand count, it'll be the blue vote paper. When we get to the annual, if we get to the annual, it will be the yellow one. We'll go over the same couple of things we usually do at the beginning. If you have a cellphone, please silence it or put it on vibrate at least. Nobody should speak unless recognized by the moderator. Anybody coming to the microphone to speak should give your name and your residence. You can just say "Asona, the East Free Town." You don't have to give your address. You should have the vote paper with you at least the first time that you speak so that we see that you are a voter. And just a couple of unusual things for today. The microphone is in the center aisle, so that's a wide aisle so that nobody will be around it. And there are some lines, white lines, that are at six-foot intervals. Those are to keep people distant if there's two or three people lined up. Please don't line up more than two or three people at a time. I don't think that we need to talk about the Xs on the ground because it looks like everybody kind of figured that out pretty good. So with that, we'll move on to Article 1 of the special town meeting. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $28,371.34 in the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund for the purpose of paying three prior fiscal year bills, to be funded from the certified retained earnings of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission. It requires a nine-tenth vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 1 as read. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 1 is adopted unanimously. Article 2. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of supplementing the educational assessment of the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School for additional tuition due for special education students and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to approve. The article is read, and it looks like we have somebody coming up for discussion.
Paul Kudo, East Free Town, Kingville, Mass. Is this for current students at Old Colony?
Yes.
So the eighth graders who are not going to be going, and I know that's a whole other issue that...I tried to watch the online Zoom meeting. That was painful. I know I tried to test it. So just by the...what are we doing for those eighth graders this year?
There is nothing...we are working on a plan, not for the current eighth graders, unfortunately. We're looking for a plan for the up-and-coming seventh graders that would be going into eighth. We're working on, looking at both Bristol Plymouth and also Old Colony. So we have submitted letters of interest to both schools, and we're waiting to hear back from them. We have asked them again if they would consider at least accepting some of our students that are currently going into the freshman year. We have yet to hear back from both of them. This article is for the additional special education cost for the existing students at Old Colony.
If I may, as the next...the teaching at the district, as I know you know, is...the education numbers for special ed are going to continue to rise. So, and for old, for...I feel bad for this year's eighth graders because many of them, that was, that was the carrot we hang, we hung over their head to get them to, to be the best they could be. That taken away, sort of, it sends the wrong message, messaging. And I know there's a lot of finger pointing we could do, and I don't want to, but I just hope we don't sort of forget. We need to watch out for those young people.
I think that if you indicated that you watched some of the videos, I think you know how strongly this board feels about special, about Old Colony, and we tried so hard.
No, I, I, I just wanted to, I guess, get an official sort of feedback about...
I agree.
What, if anything, we might be able to do to help this year's group, but it seems sort of out of our hands. I, I just was curious as to, this is for the kids already there.
Yes, that's true. Thank you.
Okay, are there any additional questions or discussion on Article 2?
Make a motion to accept Article 2 as read.
Second.
You're an overachiever. We already have the motion.
I just want to make sure.
Abby's so excited to be here right now. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 2 is adopted unanimously. Article 3. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $167,961.66 for the purpose of supplementing funds for payment of the sewer use charges received from the city of Fall River in the expense budget of the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, with funding from a transfer of certified retained earnings and/or take any action relative thereto. This requires a majority vote? Uh, sorry, this was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to accept as read.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article 3 as read. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 3 is adopted unanimously. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to rescind authorization of the unissued portion of debt in the amount of $72,000, which was originally authorized in the amount of $6,500,000 under Article 1 of the special town meeting on November 14th, 2018, for the purpose of financing the construction, furnishings, and equipment of a new police station and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the town accountant and the treasurer-collector. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion's been made and seconded to approve Article 4 as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 4 is adopted unanimously. I'll now take a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. Motion's made and seconded to adjourn the special town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The special town meeting is adjourned. Uh, we cannot start the annual town meeting for another 12 minutes, and I think for at least another 12 people. But I will go over a couple of the changes that we're going to do with the annual town meeting for the folks that are here. We've done some things to try and speed it up so that we don't have to be out in the sun as long. Uh, one of those things on the inside of the warrant, inside cover, I think, of the warrant, you see a list of procedural motions. There are other towns do this, and they refer to it as a consent calendar. What these motions are going to do is it's just going to speed us through some articles that we usually don't talk about anyway, or that we have to do, or that the people who put them on here no longer want us to do. So the first one you see, when we get to that, is going to say to take articles, or to consider Articles 6, 7, 9, 10, 12, 13, 18, 20, and 21 prior to Article 1. What that means is that we would take those articles before we do the budget. The second motion is to waive the reading of all those articles so that we don't have to actually read them word for word. The third motion is going to be to adopt about half of them as read, as printed in the warrant, and that's what it sounds like. That's a, that's voting yes or no on those articles as a block. Uh, the fourth motion is again to vote yes or no on one of those articles. That one just happens to require a different vote amount. The fifth motion asks to do Article 21, which is the planning board, the FEMA flood map article. They are withdrawing that article. They no longer need it, so we're going to get to skip over that one. And motion 6 is going to ask to postpone, excuse me, postpone two articles indefinitely. Uh, those were petition articles for the highway department. The folks that petitioned for them no longer want them, but because they were a petition, they couldn't take them off and they couldn't withdraw them. So the motion to indefinitely postpone will basically just push them off. We're not going to vote yes or no. We're going to vote that we're not going to vote. Um, I just got a lot louder.
I'm trying to minimize the wind.
We're also going to put in a motion to get Tim some hobbies. Uh, another big change we're going to do when we get to the budget. Usually we read the budget line by line, and that takes about 45 minutes by itself. Today, we're not going to do that. Um, there are two different ideas. The first one is to just vote on the entire budget in one vote, and if folks are objectionable to that, then we will take it in sections, general government, public, safety, and so on. Uh, this does not mean that you can't ask questions or that you can't make amendments. It's just meant so that you don't have to listen to me read numbers for 45 minutes. Uh, so please look through the budget now while you have some time. Uh, I think, if I remember correctly, the third column is what the departments requested. The fourth and fifth columns are what the recommendations are. The recommendations of the two boards are the same, and in many instances, the recommendations are the same as the request, but there are some instances where they're not. So use the spare time, if you would, to look through the budget, get any questions or notes in your head, and then when we get to the budget, you can still get up and ask as many questions or make any amendments that you like. Oh, okay, terrific. Uh, we have heard that we do finally have 50 people, so when we hit 11 o'clock, we can roll. And that's going to be in another nine minutes. So, um, you know, as I say, please use the time to go through the budget, to go through the motions, the procedural motions, to see if you have any questions or concerns or comments. Abby looks like she's got a question. We haven't even started. I don't think that one's on.
That's okay, I'm really loud.
All right. Go for it.
Along with posting warrants at various places, there's a lovely group on Facebook called Free Towners. Um, I would suggest, I mean, I posted this morning that the, the town meeting was happening, but I would suggest that, um, from here on out, just be aware that it's a wonderful resource to reach out to the people in town so that they know what's going on, if they're not going out of their houses or going to the post office or hanging out at Junior's or anything. So it's just a suggestion. And if you're not part of the group, join Free Towners.
Folks, the appointed hour having arrived, and I'm told a quorum is present, and we're not going to question it at this point. I'm going to call the annual town meeting to order. I'm going to ask the town clerk to read the warrant in the return.
Warrant for the annual town meeting, Saturday, June 20th, 11:00 a.m. Griffith Field, Aparoniquet Regional High School, 100 Holland Road, Lakeville, Mass. To either of the constables in the town of Free Town, in the name of the Commonwealth... Okay. What did we do? Can you hear me now? All right. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Free Town, who are qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet at Griffith Field at Aparoniquet Regional High School, 100 Holland Road, Lakeville, Mass. on Saturday, the 20th day of June 2020 at 11:00 a.m., then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof of the following, at the following places: the Asona Post Office, the East Free Town Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store in Asona, the Free Town Town Hall, the Free Town Communications Center, and Free Town Fire Rescue Station #3. Hereof fail not and make return of the original warrant with your doings thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Free Town, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the town of Free Town, this second day of June, anno domini 2020, signed by the Free Town Board of Selectmen. To the town clerk, town of Free Town, Massachusetts, June 4th, 2020, I have this day posted attested copies of the warrant in the designated places described herein, signed by the Constable, Carlton E. Abbott, Jr.
Okay, folks, once again, um, it's going to be the yellow ticket, vote ticket, if we need to do a count, will be for the annual town meeting. Again, please silence all cellphones or set them to vibrate at least. Uh, nobody should speak unless recognized by the moderator. Anybody coming to speak should give the name and residence. It can be "Asona, the East Free Town." It doesn't have to be your actual address. Uh, you should have your vote paper with you if you come out for the first time so that we can recognize that you're a voter. Uh, for the annual town meeting, all, uh, all articles will be funded from taxation unless otherwise said. And before we get into anything, I'm sure a number of you folks probably voted on Tuesday, and you may have seen on the ballot, one of the officers up for reelection on the ballot for the Water and Sewer Commission was Brad Paiva. Unfortunately, Brad passed away on Tuesday, and his services are actually taking place right now. So I'm going to ask that we observe a moment of silence in honor of Brad at this time. Thank you. Uh, so as we talked about a little bit before the meeting, and I don't think anybody else has trickled in since there, we have some procedural motions that we're going to use to try and speed things up, and I am going to take those now. So the first motion, as printed in the warrant, is to consider Articles 6, 7, 9, 10, 12, 13, 18, 20, and 21 prior to Article 1. Would somebody please make that motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt all those articles as printed.
Okay, the motion is, uh, I'm just going to clarify, we're just taking them early. We're not adopting them yet. Is that...
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the motion is made and seconded to take all those articles early as printed. Uh, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is adopted unanimously. Motion 2 is to waive the reading of Articles 6, 7, 9, 10, 12, 13, 18, 20, and 21.
Second.
That motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is adopted unanimously. Motion 3 is to adopt Articles 6, to adopt Articles 6, 7, 9, 10, and 20 as printed in the warrant. These articles require a majority vote, and they are recommended by the Finance Committee.
Make a motion to adopt 6, 7, 9, 10, and 20 as printed in the warrant.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? This is the opportunity to discuss any of those articles. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is, uh, the motion rather is adopted unanimously. Those articles are adopted unanimously. Motion 4 is to adopt Article 18 as printed in the warrant. This article requires a two-thirds vote, and the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to adopt Article 18 as printed.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this article? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. Uh, motion 5 was to adopt Article 21. However, the planning board has withdrawn Article 21, so we will not need that motion. Motion 6 is to postpone Articles 12 and 13 indefinitely. This motion requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends that the articles be postponed indefinitely.
Make a motion to postpone Articles 12 and 13.
Motion is made and seconded to postpone Articles 12 and 13 indefinitely. Uh, is there any discussion on this motion or those articles? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion 6 is adopted unanimously. Articles 12 and 13 are postponed indefinitely. Article 1. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the town charges for the fiscal year 2021, viz: general government, public safety, health and human services, public works, education, culture and recreation, interest in principal debt, townwide fueling, and unclassified surpitt assessment, retirement, insurances, Medicare and transfers, capital equipment, capital building, and other property improvements, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote, and as we discussed before, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the entire budget as recommended by the Finance Committee if somebody is inclined to make that motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the budget as recommended by both the Board of Selectmen and the FINCOM.
Okay, that motion has been made and seconded. Uh, again, this is just designed to prevent reading the budget. It does not stop anybody from asking questions or making amendments to any of the individual budgets. At this time, would anybody like to ask questions or make amendments to any of the budgets? Please feel free to do so. Okay, hearing none. Uh, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 1 is adopted unanimously in the recommended amount. I think that is a record for how fast we've ever done the budget. Uh, yes, now I just have to skip ahead about six pages. Okay, for Article 2, uh, Article 2 is typically done the same way. We read them, and we go back to the hold. So I am going to read them because it's a much shorter list, and for procedural reasons, I am going to place a hold on the highway surveyor budget, uh, highway surveyor salary because there's no recommendation for that one. We can't adopt the recommended number. So to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town, as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108 of the General Laws, as amended, for the fiscal year 2021, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. Uh, for the moderator, both the request and the recommendation are $150 per meeting. For the Board of Selectmen, both the request and recommendation is $6,000 per member per year. For the town clerk, the both the request and recommendation is $58,270 per year. For the Board of Assessors, both the request and recommendation is $4,192 per member per year. For the tree warden, both the request and recommendation is $22 per hour. The highway surveyor is going to be on hold. The regional school district committee, both the request and the recommendation is $1,106 per member per year. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the recommended figures, again leaving out the highway surveyor for the time being.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, according to the recommendations of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to adopt the recommended figures for all except the highway surveyor, which is still on hold. Is there any discussion on anybody who is not the highway surveyor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those salaries are adopted unanimously, and, uh, we're going to need a motion on the highway surveyor, and it looks like he is coming to the microphone. Okay, possibly with a motion, hopefully with a motion.
Well, to start with, uh, I, I did what everybody else did with a 2% raise. I'm just, just following the lead of what everybody else is getting. I like, like it, obviously. I'd like more money. It seems kind of funny because all the departments have been asked to cut their budgets, uh, turn back money, and yet everybody's getting raises. It's kind of silly. Uh, but I would appreciate the 2% raise, obviously, but, uh, if nothing more, I'd like to be at the level that I was last year. Thank you.
Okay, would anybody like to make a motion on this?
Make a motion to accept this department fiscal year 2021 request for the highway surveyor at $72,688.
Motion, motion has been made and seconded to adopt the salary at the requested figure of $72,688 per year. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I think I heard one opposed, but, uh, I let her, it was the reverberation from the mic, but it is adopted by the majority at very least. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to approve the sum of $970,701 to operate the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year 2021 with an appropriation for the following direct expenses: personnel, $92,732; expenses, $788,200; for a total of $880,932 in the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, and the sum of $89,769 for indirect costs appropriated in the general fund as part of the omnibus budget, with all costs totaling $970,701 and supported by $50,000 in certified retained earnings and the remaining $920,701 from Water Sewer Enterprise receipts, or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 3 as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There's a repeat. Article 3 is adopted unanimously. Uh, Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,800 for the purpose of funding the removal of a very large tree located at 29 Braley Road and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the tree warden. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt Article 4 as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 4 is adopted unanimously. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21A and a half, which provides for a 10% increase in compensation for an assessor or assistant assessor who has completed the necessary courses of study and training and been awarded a certificate by the International Association of Assessing Officers as a certified assessment evaluator, or who has been awarded a certificate by the Association of Massachusetts Assessors as a certified Massachusetts assessor, and further to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $419.20 to supplement the budget of the Board of Assessors for this purpose and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 5 as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 5 is adopted unanimously. Articles 6 and 7, we already dealt with earlier, so we'll move on to Article 8, to see if the town will vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 114, Section 18, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $2,500 for the repair or restoration of monuments in various cemeteries and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion is made and seconded to approve Article 8 as read. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article 8 is adopted unanimously. Articles 9 and 10, we have already done. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to appropriate in the general fund and transfer the sum of $23,000 from a special revenue receipts reserved for appropriate... from a special revenue receipts reserve for appropriation account known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, for the purpose of funding video service agreements and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the town accountant and the treasurer-collector. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion is made and seconded to approve Article 11 as read. Is there any discussion or questions on Article 11? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 11 is adopted unanimously. Articles 12 and 13, we have already taken care of. Article 14, I have been asked to let you know that Article 14 will be funded by a transfer from the stabilization fund, and it will therefore require a two-thirds vote rather than a majority vote. When you hear the article, it will say raise and appropriate or transfer. None of you is running, and somebody's still got a touchdown, I'm not sure what happened.
How appropriate, we're on the football field.
So when you hear this, Article 14 will be out of the transfer from the stabilization fund. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $85,335.35 to pay for the cost of a network infrastructure for the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District. The new wireless network shall be a local controller or cloud-based enterprise-class wireless network compatible with a Hewlett-Packard Pro-Curve wired network, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District. It will now require a two-thirds vote because it is being transferred from the stabilization fund. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 14 as read, which includes transferring from the stabilization fund. Is there any discussion or questions on Article 14? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 14 is adopted unanimously. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $550,000 for the purpose of design and construction of a renovation and expansion of the Free Town Senior Center Building located at 227 Chase Road, including all costs incidental and related thereto, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into contracts in excess of three years to carry out the purposes of this article, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by petition of the Council on Aging. I'm just going to clarify, Bruce, I understand you guys want capital stabilization for this, is that correct? Okay. The Senior Center is asking that this be funded by a transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund, which means this will require a two-thirds vote, and the Finance Committee has taken no position on this article. So I will open it up for a motion and discussion.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that we adopt the article as read.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt the article as read, which includes transferring from the Capital Stabilization Fund. And then I'll recognize Mr. Wilbur to address the article.
This article was presented to the Selectmen by petition to put an addition on the Senior Center. We started this about a year ago, then through a couple of avenues to try to get it before last year's town meeting, which we weren't successful. So we ended up putting it on by petition. The addition that we're recommending, the Council on Aging Board of Directors is recommending is a 190-square-foot addition to the first floor. If you're familiar with the Senior Center, it will be from the entrance of the Senior Center, the left-hand side of the Senior Center going all the way to the end of the building. That would be the first floor, so we'd be adding 190 square feet. The second-floor addition would be taking the roof off the entrance and going from that point over to the end of the Senior Center, and that would be approximately 340 square feet. So the total square foot of usage that we would add would be 530 square feet. It comes out to be 10-foot out by approximately 30, 30-some feet long. The purpose of this addition would be to add more services and continue our services for the seniors in the town, and allow us to have, the way the Senior Center, the Council has defined it, three additional rooms. Right now, we have one room that we have available for our services, such as shine, the foot doctor, and the tax preparation person that comes in. And the seniors have to wait either outside, or in the hall, or in the room next door, which is designated as the pool room. In the last couple of months, we've been pretty challenged up there at the Senior Center with COVID-19. Right now, if you went to the Senior Center, you'd find that we have a lot of food and items in the pool room that's filled the room up where no one can even sit in that room. We've accepted many, many items from Stop &amp; Shop and different entities that we've been, the director has put out to all of our seniors in need. They call up, and of course, in this particular time of the world, there's quite a few that need services. But this addition would allow us to open it up, have a room where the seniors could come in and wait. It would also allow us, our vision is to have three petitions in this room on the second floor that would allow us to open it up to use the full capacity of that room, or close it up so we could use three rooms at that time. I don't know what else, if there's any questions about what we would like to do further, but that's it. Again, we're asking for no more construction. I think it's within our scope that it's affordable, and that we can, based on what I've spoken with the town officials, the financing is probably not a problem. If there's any questions, I'd like to answer that now. If not, unfortunately, everyone on the petition, which we had about 100 people who signed the petition, as you know, a senior population has issues, that's for sure. And getting down here in this weather, and getting on the field with walkers and wheelchairs is difficult. And most of the people that we did call in the last week to try to get them here, you know, they raised that concern. So I hope that everyone here is sympathetic with our need, and vote in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion or questions? Abby, go ahead.
Yep, yep, pain in the butt. I just was wondering if the seniors will still be able to use the Senior Center while the construction is going on? Is there a plan in place for that? Okay, that was just my curiosity. Thank you.
Okay, for anybody that might not have been able to hear, Bruce did answer yes to that question. The seniors will still be able to use the Senior Center during the construction period. Is there any additional questions or concerns? Okay, hearing none. Again, this is going to require a two-thirds vote because it's coming from the Capital Stabilization Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I would say Article 15 has been adopted unanimously. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to transfer $619,500 of the unused appropriation in the Water Capital Project Fund as voted under Article 19 of the June 5, 2017 annual town meeting, and funded with a transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund, originally intended for the design, permitting, and construction of DEP-mandated upgrades to the water filtration facility to the Capital Stabilization Fund, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the town accountant. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion is made and seconded to approve Article 16 as read. Is there any discussion? Okay, no discussion on Article 16. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 16 is adopted unanimously. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to transfer $61,280.95 of the unused appropriation in the Bridge Rehab Capital Project Fund as voted under Article 12 of the October 27, 2015 special town meeting, and funded originally with a bond anticipation note or BAN, but fully repaid with the transfers from free cash intended for the design and construction needed to rehabilitate the bridges on Locust Street and South Main Street as follows: $50,000 to the new purpose of repairs to the roof of the Highway Barn, and the remaining $11,280.95 to the stabilization fund, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the town accountant. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the article as read. Is there any discussion or questions on Article 17? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 17 is adopted unanimously. Article 18, we have already done. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to seek special legislation allowing for the appointment of up to two alternate members to the Free Town Conservation Commission, and/or take any action relative thereto. A copy of the proposed special legislation is on file with the town clerk. This was submitted by the Conservation Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. So far, nobody else does either.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion is made and seconded to approve Article 19 as read. Is there any question or discussion on Article 19? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 19 is adopted unanimously. Article 20, we have already done, and Article 21 was withdrawn. Before we adjourn, I would just like to ask two kind of poll questions, just yes or no. One was, were folks satisfied with the motions that sped things up and the speeded-up version of the budget? All in favor of that? All who were opposed and didn't like it? Okay, Greg was opposed, everybody else was good with it. The second question, other than in the heat, were folks favorable to meeting outside periodically?
No.
That was a pretty resounding no. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting.
Michael, one more thing.
Oh.
I just want to have everybody welcome our new selectman, Mr. Trevor Matthews, and congratulate him. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, folks, for coming out today. Hopefully, the next time, we have air conditioning, and walls, and a roof.